...the meeting of the Board of Education in public and is not to be considered a public meeting, and what we mean by that is that it doesn't just mean that anybody can jump in anytime they want to, we're having the meeting in public, but that doesn't mean everyone partakes at the same time. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Present.
Mr. Glenn?
Present.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
I'm here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. There it is.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members have had the opportunity to see the agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Members have also had the opportunity to read the minutes of our last meeting, which was October 16th, 2021. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
You said October.
August. That's what I meant.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes. Item six, special orders. First is Mount Healthy Teachers Association.
There's no input.
Thank you. And item 6B is communications announcements, public input. We have two requests to speak to the board, both from William Carter. Mr. Carter, if you could go use the microphone over there. And if you could start by stating your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes for each topic.
All right. So I'll start. My name is William Carter. I live at 2088 Miles Woods Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45231. And first issue, I think probably is the quickest issue to bring to the board's attention, is I've gotten reports from my youngest, who is 10 years old, that there's apparently the radio getting played on school bus, and that radio broadcasts colorful language on a regular basis. And while I'm sure when our kids display respect and, you know, use proper terminology in school and acceptable terminology, they're certainly not going to learn that if they're riding to school and hearing this language displayed on the bus. You know, what's normal to them, they hear it regularly, they're going to use it regularly. And, you know, my children, you know, that would not be acceptable in my house. So to hear that, you know, I'll just ask for you guys to look into that and to address it. I don't know how CDs, Kids Bob, whatever, but would definitely not want them to be experiencing profane language being used on the radio on the bus. The bigger issue, however, and the second issue that I'll bring to this board, is that since the beginning of the school year, my honors, my fourth-ranked child at the high school in the 10th grade, has not had a teacher in her 10th grade honors by R.L.G. class. No teacher, no curriculum, no lesson plan. Essentially, it is a wasted hour of her day every day. And her mother and I have been believed to be working through what we felt were the proper channels, and it is not getting addressed. So I'm bringing it before this board because I'd like you guys to address it immediately, as quickly as possible. If you think about it, we're four weeks into the school year, they are going to be tested, and it's just not acceptable. I mean, this is one of those situations where, you know, I view our competitiveness as a school system. To me, this is where that shows up, right? Because when you are, when you're taking care of your most exceptional kids, that's what gets out. That becomes your reputation. I don't think it's a mistake that my family is pretty much the only family on our block that goes to Mount Healthy schools. Now, I live in a large neighborhood, you guys know that neighborhood over there. There are a lot of kids that go to school, they go to other schools, but they don't go to Mount Healthy. Why? Because of situations like this. We have to take care of our kids even when things are not planned. Now, I understand that the teacher did go out on maternity leave. Typically, that is not a surprise, so I'm very surprised by the situation, and I'd just like to put that before the board, and if you guys have a response, I'd love to discuss it on any level.
Normally, the board does not respond, but I would be happy to set up a time for us to talk together.
It really isn't the kind of thing that the board does.
It's not a discussion.
Okay.
It's just input, which I'd be happy to talk to you later tonight, even after the board meeting.
Okay.
Well, we are glad you brought that to our attention. Superintendent knows it, so she can follow up with you.
Okay. Sure, I'll follow up with you guys tonight, because I'd really like to understand what next steps are going to be.
Sure, absolutely.
Again, she's in the 10th grade, she's going to be tested, we're a month in, so every day she loses is a day she's losing towards what she's supposed to be accomplishing as a student. So those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other communications announcements? Anything?
No.
Item seven is the Great Oaks Board Report.
Thank you. Oh, no, it went back up. Oh. Thank you. Good evening. On the 8th of September, we had the Great Oaks Board of Directors held their meeting at the Laurel Oaks Career Campus in Wilmington, Ohio. They had a ribbon-cutting ceremony. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that area, but that was an army base, and they bought that up there, and they had, it was a lot of separate little buildings, and now they've created one building, and it's really nice. And prior to the regular monthly board meeting, the board members attended an open house and ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Laurel Oaks Career Campus in Wilmington. Construction and renovations are nearly completed at the campus, and includes space for new programs, renovations to existing labs and classrooms, and a structure to join and enclose the two main campus buildings. One of the things that precipitated this was, you know, kids don't like to put on coats, so they were brought from one building to the next. When they had to go to classes, no coats. So that was to alleviate that, one of the things. The event featured a ceremony which included remarks from Governor Mark DeWine, several Laurel Oaks graduates, Dean Kevin Abbott, Great Oaks Board Chair Bill Ferguson, and Glen Oak, Great Oaks President, CEO Harry Snyder. I did get to talk with Governor, but I did not. I was not one of them people that took a picture with him. But he did remember me, I'll say that. When he came down here for our football game, when his grandson was playing.
Little Miami?
Yeah, when they played us the last time we had a football game, he came down, and I introduced myself to him then. Okay, community members, the Laurel Oaks alumni also toured the new building. This is the third or fourth major renovations to Great Oaks campuses. The fourth construction project at Live Oaks is in progress. Advisory Committee, each Great Oaks program and campus has a business and industry advisory committee made up of area professionals in the relevant career field. These committees meet several times during the school year and several functions. They often recommend, they offer recommendations on curriculum and equipment, and keep staff and instructors up to date on trends in the industry, and support students through classroom discussion and job placement. The board approved more than 1,200 members of the over 100 BIACs for 2021, 2022. The members include business and industry leaders, post-secondary educators, managers, and alumni. Enrollment on campus, high school enrollment as of August the 27th is 2,915, and this is the level with the 2020 and 2021 official count of 2,916. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Item eight is the legislative report. I actually did not write one up for tonight because the legislature has been on summer recess, but I will share that the districts are supposed to be redrawn, and the districts have been redrawn for the state congressional districts and senate districts, passed by a vote of five to two, with the Republicans voting yes and the two Democrats voting no. Since it was not passed in a bipartisan fashion, it will only be in effect for four years, and they still need to draw the federal districts, I believe. I'm pretty sure I'm right on that. But they've been on recess, so there's really nothing else to report. So item nine is the report of the treasurer, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. A is a recommendation to approve the schedule of bills for August of 2021.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Do we have any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item B is the financial statement for August of 2021. I'd like to recommend its acceptance.
Do I have a motion? Sorry. Do I have a motion? I'll say, Mrs. Ellis.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, I need your permission to create the following accounts as they are listed there.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
What are these accounts for?
People apply for various grants, and each of these are approximately worth $1,500 or $1,000, depending on which grant they applied for. So you see, there's several with the same name on there, but she's applied for them on behalf of the schools.
Hold on.
So they can, sometimes it's for science materials, it could be for a variety of things.
Is this comprehensive literacy?
Oh, is this the CLFST?
This is the comprehensive literacy. SD. Whatever those words.
Any further discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. I need your authorization to transfer the following funds, 46170 from the class of 21 to the class of 22, and $200,000 from general fund to the EMIS account.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
The $200,000. EMIS is for the Educational Management Information System that the state put into place many years ago, and they gave us approximately $10,000 to begin with, what costs way more than that. So general fund now has to transfer money into that fund to cover it. The state no longer gives us any money for that, so that's what we're doing.
So you said at one time the state was funding this?
They.
Now we have to take it?
They funded about $10,000, which didn't near cover it at all. And that's been.
In the 80s, I believe.
Thirty-some years ago, right?
The EMIS started in the 80s.
In the 80s, yes.
Any additional discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. And this is a recommendation to approve payments for the items listed there, received and paid under a then-announced certificate in FY21 and FY22.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
What's the?
These are items that were, we received the invoice before the purchase order was put in place. So that's why we have to put it on here to make sure the auditors don't cite us in our upcoming audit.
This is only carry off the Supreme Protagonist, which is number three, in the amount of 1,481, 13.
For what? Oh, yeah, for salt.
Oh, salt, okay.
Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And last is the adoption of the FY22 appropriations as they fit into the county auditor's amended certificate, and that's one of the items that's laying at your table that you cannot read without a microscope.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
It's primarily a listing of all of our accounts by fund. That includes our multiple state and federal accounts, all of the '08 teams and '09 teams, which are basically school accounts, principals' accounts, and then special grants like the learning links. Those will each have their own fund, and then general fund, food service, bond, retirement. So we have to list beginning balances, what is projected to come in for this year, and then the ending balance, combination of the beginning balance and what we've projected to come in this year, is what we can appropriate to. Probably more than you wanted to know.
It is. Now you create a headache, that headache.
Any additional discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you, and I have just one item of information. Tomorrow, we will be having the GAAP auditors here to prepare our GAAP statements for the previous school year.
Thank you. Item 10 is the superintendent's report. Dr. Hawkins?
Thank you. I have a few informational items as we begin. The first is, we will be having a grand opening or ribbon-cutting for the Early Learning Center. That will be on Sunday, October the 24th, at 2:00. All are welcome to attend, and we're excited that we will soon be moving into that facility. We are planning to do a period of remote instruction the last week of the quarter, which will start on October the 11th, and go through October 22nd. Students are actually out of school on Monday and Tuesday of the second week, so it would be eight days. This is for a variety of reasons, from COVID cases and to also moving into the Early Learning Center. We will be moving classrooms over, so we are planning to make sure students have what they need so they can be remote during that time, and we can get ready for the new transition with the new quarter. Item, the third thing, David Montgomery, maybe some of you watched him yesterday on the sports competition. He made a, the football game, sorry, between the Bengals. I know, Bengals, I was watching them, just because of David. So anyway, David made a big donation to our football team. He gave all of the players cleats and gloves, and we are very appreciative for David giving them those items. He continues to be very generous to the district. Last year, he gave every player, when they went to the playoffs, new gloves, and I know I spoke with his mother earlier this year, and they are arranging a backpack drive at one, that they're planning to do at a football game. So we are very appreciative of the Montgomery family and their continued support for Mount Healthy. And this is not related to David, but it is related to sports. We have received a grant from the Good Sports Company, and earlier we started elementary sports in, across the district, trying to be more competitive, giving our students opportunity. So Dr. Harris's team, they wrote a grant, and we received this, and what it does, it gives athletic equipment to our elementary students, and they have an online catalog, and we can go into that online catalog, and we can pick everything that we want. We can do that six times over a two-year period. So that's a great grant that we have received, and it also is right in line with our new mission of helping our students start earlier into sports activities, so that eliminates some of that cost for our families. So we're excited about that grant. The next item is a discussion concerning preschool tuition. At the last meeting, we talked about waiving fees, but we didn't specifically talk about preschool tuition. So I wanted to give the opportunity for the board to discuss this. In relation to fees, we decided to waive them again this year. I wanted to bring it before the board to see if you also wanted that to apply to preschool tuition.
What kind of tuition would we be talking about for the preschool? If we were to charge, what would we be looking at for an amount?
It ends up being a couple hundred a month. Do you have an? It's not an astronomical amount, but for families that are struggling financially, you know, it is a concern, but I thought it was right around 200, but it may be less than that.
Is it, is it something where it will be disadvantaging the district financially if we do waive those fees?
No. No, because what we spend is significantly more than what we actually take in, just like all of our other careers as well.
Are we just speaking of this year, this school year?
Just this school year.
And next year, assuming that we do waive fees next year or not, we'll have them all together.
What we thought? All the fees together in one pot to decide on, rather than having preschool separate?
When we talked about waiving fees earlier, I didn't specifically mention the preschool fees, so we thought we needed to specifically state it this time.
And we did, you know, we have waived pay-to-play for this year, we have waived the instructional fees, so I do feel that it would be in line to also waive preschool. The primary reason many of our students are in our preschool program is to help them be better prepared to enter kindergarten, so I feel like this would be in line with the other stands that we have taken. We just wanted to get the input on the board and see if you were in agreement with that, for us to move in that direction.
I think it's a great idea.
I agree.
Okay, great.
Happy doing it for those of you who are not smart to do it for them too.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, let me back up real quick. Were we going to talk about each item now or wait until the end to give a headwind on each?
Oh.
This is a discussion.
Yeah, anything, sure.
Yeah, because, you know, moving back, we're, I guess, where he was, Mr. Turner, was concerned about the testing, and he's, we're going to be out of school from October to October 22nd. Will that interfere with the students being tested?
No. And school will be continuing, it will be remote, so they will still be logging on to their class and going through their normal school day. During October 11th through the 22nd, there are eight school days, and so they will have a learning, it will just be in a remote setting versus in person.
So if his or another student needed additional help, they would reach out to him?
The teacher would be available. The teacher would be available, they would go into the Google Classroom at their normal bell time, and the teacher would be there. If they needed some additional help, they could schedule a Google Meet with that teacher. This is the last week of the quarter and the first week of the next quarter, so some of our students are just doing tests, especially at the high school level, during that time, and then starting the new quarter. So Monday and Tuesday of the second week, they are off, we have professional development for our teachers, and then they would start the new quarter on Wednesday with new material.
Okay, my other question, I was holding back, with the sports grant for the elementary students. Now, the equipment that they're going to be purchasing or receiving, is that the, ours?
It is.
Or is it going to, that goes with the students?
It would, it would be similar to a uniform that we would give out, we would let the students use it, and then at the end of the season, they would return that back to us.
And then back to, I'll discuss, we were just at, the preschool tuition, I'm all for that.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, no, that's great.
If I'm remembering correctly, because, Dr. Hawkins, you told me about the remote days in October, and I know you said that it was partly so that we could move all the furniture and equipment and everything, get the preschool kindergarten ready, but I think if I'm remembering correctly, it also had to do with trying to break any cycle of COVID cases.
Yes.
Rising that we have.
It is.
So sending everybody back home briefly is going to hopefully stop any spreading that's going on before it gets out of hand.
And we are actually cleaning the buildings, doing a very deep clean. Our COVID numbers are continuing to rise significantly, and we really are trying to do everything that we can to keep our students in session. We believe strongly that teachers are the most effective situation, you know, where teachers and students are working one-on-one. So we are trying to be proactive in breaking up that time a little bit. Just to give you a point of reference, last Monday, 25% of the teachers were out at the high school. Today, at North Elementary, 28% of students were absent from that school. So this is So this is something you can control on maybe for a day or two. But if you start seeing this trend day after day, it would put us in a situation where we would have to go fully remote. So we are trying to be very proactive where we can break it up. This week, we have two professional development days on Thursday and Friday. So we're going to be able to break up the week a little bit. Hopefully, some of the students will be able to be home and recover, come back to school. Then we have a couple weeks until this remote learning event. Then we would be able to clean the buildings and hopefully students would recover, come back. And we have a short amount of time until Thanksgiving break. Again, the time for cleaning the buildings and then we have about three, a little over three weeks until Christmas break. So we are trying to be very proactive so that we can remain in person as much as possible.
And we saw on the news, they had a store, an announcement about that. And my husband said, well, why are they waiting till October 11th then? And I said, well, I think parents would appreciate having some time to make arrangements rather than us saying, oh, by the way, starting tomorrow.
Right.
You're going to be remote again. So I think it's, you know, ideally, yeah, the kids would be in person all the time, but this seems like a good way to try to, try to break that cycle of, of the spread.
And in addition, as Dr. Turner said, we have reached out to families to make sure if they do not have internet at home, that we are providing a mobile hub. We have those, we bought those with our technology money last year. We are making sure that devices are going home with each student, allowing parents to know that this is coming so that often if we have to, and I'm not going to say that we may never have to, cancel school on a short notice due to illness, teacher, student, we're not sure. But often when you cancel on a short notice or you say tomorrow, we're going to go remote, people treat it more like a calamity day than an instructional day. And we're trying to set up a situation so that this time will be instructional, not considered like a snow day for students.
You don't have any?
Sure. The next item, I'm going to, Becky's going to talk a little bit more about, we are talking about creating an educational foundation. And that is related to, we have an advancement officer, Lori Daniels, that is working on obtaining large donations for our school district. One help with that would be to have an educational foundation set up. And Becky can give more information on that.
So our attorneys, Enes Britten, have been giving us information about this. And we do have to have a sponsor, another organization to sponsor us. And it looks like the Cincinnati Foundation will sponsor us. We will have to, the board will have to designate some seed money into the foundation. And you, we, you could give, get it back after we've taken in other donations. But we have to do this and we can't just take it into our books and then pay it out that way. It has to be separate in, in a foundation. There's a lot of IRS regulations. And so that's why Enes Britten is taking care of that for us. As soon as we have more specific information, I'll send that along to you.
Do you have any idea how much seed money we have to put out for?
Well, she said there wasn't actually a set amount, but we were both thinking like $100,000 to start the account for this. But that, we can continue to hammer that out once we go further with it. And I'll be sending you more information about that.
We are in the, the early stages. We've just contacted the attorney to find out what we would do to, need to do to set up the foundation. We just wanted the board to know that we were investigating this so that, you know, you wouldn't be surprised when later we started sending information. We are reaching out to a security company for sub-security people. And it's very difficult to find substitutes in all areas, whether you're talking about teaching. It's especially difficult to find security help. And occasionally, we do have security personnel that have to go out for illness. And so we are reaching out to them just as we would reach out to Hamilton County ESC to provide teacher substitutes. But I just wanted the board to be aware of that, that we are forming that relationship. The next item are the change orders that do not have to be voted on, but I just wanted to make the board aware of. They are listed here. They range from delays due to weather and, or Duke, when they didn't show up when they were supposed to, to relocating a fire line or doing some parking lot work. We're still within the margin that was set aside for change orders, and this is just a summary of that. So was there any discussion on, any more discussion on any of those items? All right. Item B is the recommendation to approve Ginter Electrical to provide electric service for all district buildings. They will also be installing additional receptacles and data drops in multiple rooms throughout, including the board office. And the total cost is $45,112.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Principal Cefele Consulting for consulting services focusing on school climate, culture, classroom equity, and school leadership during the 21-22 school year. The total cost is $60,000 and that is paid with title funds.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? And this is, I believe, to, to address the, we've been having some.
We have.
We've, we've been having a little more fighting and that sort of thing. So it's to, to improve the, the climate.
Yes, it is. And we are, you know, I want to assure everyone, we have had, you know, many disagreements at the high school. And someone made the point that our current ninth graders have not been in a school building since they were in seventh grade. So they, a lot of our students did not have the opportunity to transition through that middle school period where they kind of thought about what did they want for their high school. So we have had a rough start to the school year. And we don't want to ignore that. We want to help our students and our staff to work through the challenges that we are facing and create a culture where all students can be proud that they attend Mount Healthy and feel that they have their needs met.
Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
She said yes, very quietly.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is the recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing in lieu of transportation payments for the 21-22 school year to the students listed below. Since we added high school busing, we did also have to bus high school students that attend private and parochial schools. In some situations, it is a cost savings to the district to give the parents a one-time payment instead of running that bus throughout the year.
Now, these are not, none of these are high schools.
We, we have to provide it for all students, but some of them.
Well, I understand that.
Right.
They only go to the eighth grade. So we would have been providing that anyway, wouldn't we?
That's true.
Oh, okay.
Yes, some of them.
That's also a change. Is there something different about the?
No, it's, whether it's eighth grade or high school, it saves us quite a bit of money.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. But you're right. This is, this is the eighth grade. You're, you're right.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item M is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Specialized Education of Ohio to provide intensive academic instruction and behavior management systems for students with emotional disabilities and other health impairments for the 21-22 school year. The total cost for our outplaced students is $432,000. The cost for alternative to expulsion would be $583,000. Right now, we are completing the HVAC on the first floor of district office. When that has been completed, it will be able to be certified as educational space. We are using that space to bring these programs into the district, into our building. Right now, Dr. Harris told me this morning that we spend a little over $2 million on these services when we use outplaced agencies. So it'll be a savings to the district. And more importantly, I think it makes the students feel like they are part of our district. So for instance, if a student were at children's home, that goes until 5:00 PM. So if you wanted to play football or be involved in some other activities, that makes it very difficult for our students. By having this in district, they will be able to be part of more of our programs and feel, you know, more part of the school community.
Okay. Do I have a motion to enter into the service agreement?
So moved.
I heard Kenny.
Carol.
Carol, okay. Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
Yeah, once this project is completed, do we hit the highest debt?
No. This is comprehensive. So the cost is higher because they bring their own staff, they meet all the educational needs of the students. So they take care of all of that, just like if we were paying tuition to another school, they would take care of the educational services.
So are we going to just apply in this space?
That's right.
Any further discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Thank you.
Item F is the recommendation to accept bids for the renovation of the Mount Healthy City School Board Office here at 7615 Harrison Avenue. This will be paid for with grant funds. We have been looking at options of finishing the third floor and doing some renovation in addition to what the HVAC that has already been approved. If the bids come in where we would like them to, we would like to, for instance, create a community center in the gym to offer laundry for our families, to have the food pantry as part of that, that we have already received a grant for, to make this area usable by our community and just to encourage, for instance, people to come here for those. We also have a parent engagement center. So maybe while they're working out or playing ball or whatever they might be doing, others might be part of some parental classes. And while they're here, they could also get food in the food pantry, things like that. The third floor renovation would include adding a professional development space that was the old library up on the third floor. We don't have a space in the district that would hold, for instance, all of the administrators or up to 50 people. That could be used by our, our staff and also by our community. If they wanted to rent out a space or use a space, they would have some offices and some other areas that could be utilized as well. And this would be paid for with grant money, not out of the general fund.
And it would include an elevator?
Yes.
Also.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. It would include a designated reception area and it would have an elevator so that it would make our building compliant.
Do I have a motion to accept bids?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion?
If they are office, they are going to be secured. If they use them, you don't have to vote and you won't be able to get into them.
Right, yes. And this is, this is just for us to put out the bids. As the bids came in, it would come to the board for you to look at the overall project and look at what the bids are and then vote on whether to officially proceed with the bids that were presented. But yes, Dr., Mr. Kilgore makes a great point. We would make sure to have secured areas. So the elevator, for instance, you would be able to go up or down to certain areas that were public, but you would need a swipe card to go on up to the offices. So it would be secured, keeping public space and private space separate.
Okay. Any further discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is the recommendation to accept bids for the renovation of the culinary department. This is the old Home Eck space at Mount Healthy High School at 8101 Hamilton Avenue. And this also would be paid for with grant funding. This year, we added a culinary program and it has been very successful. We have a chef who was actually just recently recognized as in the World Federation of Chefs and he will be competing in the Chef Olympics. Did you know there was Chef Olympics? Yeah. And actually, two years from now. He is fantastic. The students are excited about the program. So we didn't have time to do many renovations before the school year started. So we're going to take bids so that next summer, that could be renovated. He is credentialed so that he could offer different pathway licenses for our students. And then this year, all of the classes are intro to cooking. Next year, it will actually evolve to different styles of cooking, including competitive cooking. And there are competitions that our students can go to and actually win scholarships. So we are very fortunate to have this chef as part of our staff here at Mount Healthy. And I think this is going to be a program that really sets us apart from other schools in our area.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept bids?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? I didn't even know the high school, I thought Home Eck was a thing of the past by the time that building got built.
It, it has three rooms that have stoves, but one that has two stoves that come together. So the, the rooms were part of the high school, which was right on that verge of when those rooms were eliminated. It, the rooms just aren't up to code with if you wanted to go into the industry. So we would need to make some changes there.
Okay.
At the high school? That's exciting.
Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item H is the recommendation to approve the addendum to the sales confirmation between Mount Healthy and NG?
NG.
Resources. This is electric. So this is our electric provider. And this isn't anything new, but it would just be a yearly agreement that we would be entering into.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I should have said it before. Is this something where these people will come out whenever you need them? Is that what that is?
I believe so. And it's actually providing our electric. Gary Crowley, our business manager, can give a little bit more.
It's also a lot of the same sort of range that is typically underneath, that is the relevant area. So it's kind of like.
Okay, it isn't what I thought it was.
It would choose to extend it.
Okay, thank you.
So this would be instead of Duke energy?
Instead of Duke, yes. Item I is the recommendation to accept the following donation to Mount Healthy Athletic Department in memory of Rick Rosenberg. And it was $100 and it was donated by Tom McLean.
Rick Rosenberg was a teacher here for most, I think, all of his career at North Junior High and a coach. And Tom McLean taught with him during that time as well.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? We never say no to donations. Can we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item J is the consent agenda. And there are just several different things listed.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
What's that? That, that is at the football games? That, that is at the football games where they're talking, and that's something that they have given a small amount to students to actually coordinate and arrange the songs and play the songs.
Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And as part of a consent agenda, I did want to highlight two things. There will be a senior class trip, junior, senior class trip that will be planned for the spring, hopefully. Nothing will prevent that. But this is just saying that we're allowing them to investigate that. And also, the boys' basketball team would be going to a holiday classic, and that would be in Somerset. And again, depending on as long as everything was good and there wasn't any concern at that time. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Item 11 is special orders. We don't have any, we never have any. Item 12, open discussion by the Board of Education. Anyone have anything they wish to discuss? That looks like a no. 13, the date of the next Board of Education meeting is October 18th at 6:00 PM. 13C, C, wait, we jumped from A to C.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry. I am a person.
We need to have an executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. So we'll be in executive session starting at 6:52?
Well, you have to put some time to get there.
And we'll just go down to my conference room.
And I assume we won't be take, we won't be having a vote or taking any kind of official action when we come back? Okay, so if anyone doesn't want to wait until we come back just to adjourn, thank you for coming tonight. It was nice to have you here.